Good evening, we'll get started with the Planning Commission's Housing Task Force meeting for Wednesday, March 19. Doug is out, Paula is here, Kathy is out. You're online, Michael Bender is online. Lupus is not here, Shikayla is here, and Dennis Toomary is here. I will sit Jay for Doug and Dennis for Kathy. Robert Friedman from the Housing Task Force is here, I'm online, and Chuck is in attendance here in the meeting. Get started, go through the minutes. Some motion to accept the minutes. Thank you, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion, corrections on the minutes? Eric, all those in favor say aye. Oppose, then I'm standing. And Michael too.
Who else is standing?
Jay and Michael are standing. With that, we will move on to new business whispering wind, application for site approval, it's referral from the zoning commission. I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Cassell.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Cassell, representing Antonio Olivera, Tony is here tonight, who is seeking to develop property at 841. 841, 846, got a few addresses, Middlesex Turnpike, up north of Oceanside Auto. I can share my screen and go through a couple of things. So property is located on the east side of Middlesex Turnpike, which runs north-south, Oceanside Auto is a couple of buildings down. This is actually the property with the RJ Beach Building, if you're familiar with that, small appliance repair shop. So right now, property is 54,000 square feet, backs up to B and L Construction in the back part of their gravel pit. And there's an existing single-family house on the property, and then the beach building is down at the southern, southern end. So right now, that's fifty, you know, acre in, in a tenth or whatever acre and a quarter with two uses. It's on Route 154, and is in a located split zone, B3 and residential AA, it's AA1.
Excuse me, did you say it's fifty acres?
No, 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 fifty thousand square feet.
It's an acre.
One and a quarter acres, yeah, yeah. Fifty, fifty-four thousand square feet. It's located, like I said, in a split commercial residential zone, and in an area where there's kind of transition from some commercial uses on the southern side of Middlesex Turnpike, where you're heading, getting toward Essex Road. And then to the north are more primarily residential properties. So what the applicant is proposing is an 8-30G affordable housing development, where 12 new townhouse units will be built. They'll all be two-bedroom units, rows of six in six. I can show you what the the architectural plans designed by Craig Wollberg. So here's, you know, basically what the, what the units will look like, two floors, gable roof. Some of the units will have a garage, some will not, some will have first-floor bedrooms, some will not. The plan is for this to be a split, some units will be rented and some will be condos and sold. Okay, so that's what the plan is at the current time. Because 8-30G, thirty percent of the units will be deemed affordable under the 830G program. So thirty percent of those units is for, so we're going to have two sixty percent units and two eighty percent units, basically affordable for individuals making sixty percent of the median income, and individuals making eighty percent of the median income. You know, we've, you can see on the site plan, there's addition of street trees, landscaping surrounding the property. One of the interesting features of this is, this is actually on well. So part of the design is two well pump houses right in the front. And also the beach building is going to get a redesign as well. We went to ARB last week, and their only request was that we add the gables here, you can see they're on the front. We add them on the back, which we did. So just to, you know, this is the side that would face beach, so we added a little bit more architectural element on the, on the back of that roof. So that was what their request was. So that's essentially the nutshell plan for you, from a plan of conservation and development perspective. We think it's consistent with the POCD, emphasize homeownership across all lifecycle levels, place a strong focus on increasing affordable housing opportunities in Old Saybrook. So we have a couple of things that you can rely on from a POCD perspective for this, for this development.
Couple of questions, the beach is going to continue, correct?
It, it will continue to be a commercial retail building, Tony's talking to Beach right now about whether they're going to stay or retire.
All right, the affordable units, are they just for rent, or are they going to be marketed for sale as well?
Or at? You know, with the price tag, we're off. Price tag comes in good, I might keep them off for rent. So it all depends on the end numbers, getting all the numbers in consistently is a couple right now.
We set it up so that it was the option to either sell or rent. And, you know, I think in discussions, it makes sense to sell kind of one block of buildings and retain one for rental. So there's two affordables in one building and two affordables in the other.
Right.
So that's how we've set it up.
Right, from a real estate perspective, it would be nice to see a couple of the affordables on the market versus as opposed to just rent. But that's just.
Yeah.
Describe it, I'm not going to have a mixture of a sale and a rent in the same building.
That's good.
So one building will be all rent, and one building will be also.
Before I get to other commissioners, is there anyone online from the public that wants to speak? Dorothy and Meredith, do you have any comments? Okay, Meredith? I believe. Is everyone back? Okay, any other commissioners have any questions or comments?
I do.
Yeah.
On the construction code, it calls it one and two family dwellings, is that accurate?
I think that's something, this isn't my department necessarily, but I think that you can accomplish that through fire separation. If you add a, you know, listen, if you add a specific fire separation, you can be deemed a one and two dwelling versus a four plus, which could require additional code measures like sprinklers. So I think with townhouses, the code allows you, if you fire separate them appropriately, to, to be deemed under the code as.
The town plan, it doesn't have to fire.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's what that means.
So you, so you do have two family units?
No, no, it's, 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 this is multi-family, because the buildings are each six-unit buildings. But from a code, fire code, fire code in particular perspective, there's a difference between when you have a one and two family, and when you have more than that, like a four family and up. Especially from a sprinkler perspective.
I see.
And so I think.
One building, I think of it as one entrance, and then one
Yeah.
family living there, and there are walls.
Each one has its own, two major levers, front and back.
Yep.
And then the basements have concrete, they're full foundations, you can't go from one basement to another.
If I'm, yeah, if I'm understanding what they're saying, it's just how they're going to do fire separation between the units.
Right, right.
It's similar to a two-family house as opposed to a four-family, which would then require.
These, these are townhouses, so they're up and down. So each, there's no, there's no common hallways, it's like Shelter Cove, or like the Cove condominiums, if you've been in those, where you own this piece of the unit, and then your neighbor owns this piece of the unit up and down. So there's no like interior stairways like in a apartment.
Right, and I would call each one of those.
One family, you're correct.
Okay, that's why I was confused by Tuesday. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mike? Just some of the questions I had are probably more around just the 830G part of it, and we kind of got into the like, some would be sold, some would be rented. Like just from like a management standpoint, does that mean like each building would be sort of treated as like a separate 830G in terms of, you know, because when people move out of them, we have to make sure you have, but maintain the same number of units. Yes, I'm just curious how like the plan would be, you know, created and enforced, if we're not really sure how we're going to be selling these yet.
Yeah, I mean, it's I think that the creation and the enforcement doesn't necessarily change, so big picture. To reserve the option to sell, we've put that on the application, that these units are eligible to be either sold or rented, number one. Number two, we'll create a condo, okay, so there'll be one condominium, so this is always going to be one development from an 830G perspective. And then the property owner is going to have the option as to whether to rent or to sell, frankly, each unit individually, because it's a condo. So the affordability plan is going to control throughout. So for the forty-year period that this development is enforced, that requires affordability, if somebody wants to either buy a unit, or buy it and then rent it, which they can do, they, or the developer wants to rent it, or he wants to sell a lot, a whole building, and then they want to rent it, the afford, the occupants will be required to meet the affordability requirements. You know, the administrator needs to vet them, to make sure they, they make the correct income, all the steps that go down from an, from an affordability perspective. I don't know if that answers your question.
So, following up with Michael saying, you're going to identify the four units.
Yeah.
And in their deed
Yep.
will be the affordability requirement. And then whether it's decided to buy or to rent or sell, it remains affordable until forty years pass.
Correct, and we have identified the units.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah, I just know, because when it's, when they're all rentals, like which unit is affordable can actually change over time. Like if somebody moves out, you might have to make a new unit affordable here, if they're being sold. It's a different situation, and I'm just kind of curious, like from the logistics, do we have that plan worked out? Like is there a company or working with us going to be creating and managing this affordable plan?
Well, what happens from a zoning perspective, because we've identified the units, and because the affordability plan will be filed, if this is approved, it'll be filed with those units. We can only rent, those, those units that have been identified have to either be rented or sold as affordable. So if we wanted to change and rent a different unit as affordable, we'd actually have to come back to the zoning commission and get a change of the, of, of which unit. So right now, the units are set as to which ones will be affordable.
It's different than.
Yeah, it's different than most other plans we've seen so far, so.
Because those were built as apartments.
Right, right.
That gives the apartment building owner the flexibility
Yeah.
to move the affordable units around based on need, or if they have someone in one that now makes too much money and they want to stay, they just have to pay market rate. And now the next one that comes up that's of the same style has to be affordable.
Yeah.
I think that's, that's because they're not deeded separately, where these would all be deeded separately.
These would always be deeded separately, is the.
Yeah.
And, you know, the condo docs, like the apartments don't have condo docs.
Right.
So there'd be, as part of the condo docs, we have to put in the restriction as to which units are restricted. So there is a little bit more teeth to it.
So it's being built as condos, and then the decision to sell could come down the line.
That's, that's the plan.
Or retain them all.
Yep.
Either way.
And this is frankly pretty similar to what we did with Eaton's Landing, if you know that. They originally sold the first four or five units, and then they decided to retain four or five units and rent them out. Over time, I think they sold most of them, I don't think they retain anymore, but that took ten years.
Okay.
A little bit of flexibility.
So though, yes, all right, so the ones that are deeded as affordable would just stay that way, whether they're retained by the company or sold initially here.
Correct.
That would, that would then carry whatever the, whoever the owner is, would then have that responsibility to either, you know, sell it as an affordable unit or rent it as an affordable unit.
Right. Thank you, Mike. Anyone else? Okay, Eric, I'd like to ask that we send this back to zoning with a favorable approval, based on the fact that it's two, as Attorney Cassell pointed out, policies in our plan of conservation and development on page fifteen, emphasis, emphasize homeownership across all lifecycle stages, and place a strong focus on increasing affordable housing opportunities in Old Saybrook. So policy one and two, on page fifteen of the POCD.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
Thank you.
Before it's safe. All right, we will move on to agenda item number five. How is the task force workshop review and comment on the draft housing survey question? Received comments from Dennis and from Doug. Anyone else have any comments?
I have a lot of comments.
Why am I not?
I did not write them all out, because I figured I could talk faster.
Okay. You got the floor. You have the floor.
Right, and first of all, and I can see that Doug mentioned it, I suggest, and again, these are suggestions.
Right.
I figured everybody would have comments, to define the terms, to divine, to specifically define and demarcate, maybe capital AH meaning the law, versus the less expensive use of the term affordable. And then later on, in number eleven, ADUs are mentioned, I know most people are not going to know what an ADU is. And it would be nice to have a simple explanation of that. And again, given that the thrust of this whole survey is both to educate and and get a sense of opinions, and that's certainly a new policy.
Do you find, do you have a question, you said the first one you were concerned about was defining which word?
Well, affordable housing, because it can mean, it really has a general layman's sense of what's affordable. You know, is that blouse affordable versus affordable housing, which.
Yeah.
Has income restrictions.
I just wanted to make sure with a note.
Yeah. It's, it's vague within the vacuum, because it keeps going back and forth.
Okay.
Right, right, every, every question.
Yeah, no, totally agree.
You know, so if you make one is, one's capital AH, or whatever.
I know what you're saying.
Gotcha, okay, all right, okay, so. I, I don't, I don't know how specific you want to get. Five, B, instead of payroll, personal income, C, instead of, right, I said rental slash mortgage costs. Again, that's a nice to be, number eight.
Where are you?
Is that the wrong thing that I gave you?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's okay.
I'll call it, hold on.
Did you give me the results?
Sorry, yeah, honey.
That's why you didn't say what policy. Those are the results.
Okay.
And A says, if you rent, what's again, this is not, I'm just. If you rent, what is the next type of housing? Well, in number C, take the family house, is that to purchase or to rent the house? Deed by property, I would say by a home. Number nine, why do you think there is a lack of affordable housing, that's the term.
Right.
Time of investment, I would add in that list, availability or in cost of land. Developer investment, perhaps I changed the wording to not profitable enough for developer. Okay, number 10. C, number of affordable units that are required by code, I flesh out code a little bit, either regulation or zoning.
Correct.
Code or. Number 11. What's a bit of affordable housing, ADUs? Well, I would add any other, 13, I would add other, but I would also stick in a, a, an option for starter homes, which are the following development options, which you like to see, Old Saybrook. Number 14. In number 14, the need, in my opinion, the needs of a young family are different from a young professional, different enough to warrant there being two separate questions. Young professionals tend to want to be where the action is, in town, and maybe, maybe oriented to a job and transit, whereas a young family is going to be more inclined to have some space, and, you know, maybe they'll look for that anyway.
No, I, I hear what you're saying, there is, it's two types of housing.
Yeah, yeah, rather than combining them for those choices, so you're creating a whole number. All right, number 16. Which of the following options is best for Mariners Way? It gives two options, I, I, my comment was just two options.
I think that question should be eliminated.
Yeah, I mean, it's so broad as to, I, I.
Well, and.
And the, and the next one.
A lot of what was assumed that is available property on Mariners Way is no longer available.
Yeah, well, that's, that was the.
Right, so that needs to be reworked, reworked completely.
Okay. And also for 17, again, sort of a general. Okay, number 20. I think would benefit from clarification also, it would be kind of interesting information for us to have. I would have a choice in there of determine, should, should Old Saybrook housing be allowed as seasonal or short-term rentals? And one choice I suggested was determined by local zoning, besides yes or no, and other.
Can I ask a question? The question itself, is seasonal and short-term rentals, two questions, or is it one question? There's one question, okay.
Well, it's one here, but if it makes more sense, I mean, I just.
Well, you'd have to define.
Yeah, short-term, yeah.
Yeah.
We're defining it.
Right.
Right, right.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and I, I just wrote down needs clarification, I mean, the whole question.
Because when I think of seasonal, I think of a house that you have to shut the water off at the end of the season. Otherwise, it, it's still a year rabbit.
As if, you know, like a zoning category of seasonal or short-term, so it's like, how would you define or enforce or even like classify houses to your point?
I mean, years ago, we had official seasonals, do we still have a season?
We have, we do have some left, yes.
Well, can they turn them off?
Yes, Bob, they turn the water off, yeah. Hey.
Yes, the, the zoning commission has put into its regulations that any accessory dwelling unit should not be available for rental of less than thirty days. And there was a question on the Connecticut Council of the American Planning Association just this week about short-term rentals. And it can be done, if they, they, they can be controlled by either zoning regs or by town ordinance. And in my experience, in Sedona, Arizona, where the state mandated that affordable, that accessory dwelling units could be put anywhere on any residential lot, what happened in Sedona was that outside money bought existing houses, divided them in half, and rents them out as Airbnbs and Verbos. And the housing situation in Sedona, Arizona deteriorated severely since 2019, because there's no place for the regular people to live, it's all, a significant percentage of the housing has been converted to rentals for vacationers. I know, I was, I was one, I was there and I witnessed it. And the people who work in the town cannot live in the town, because they cannot afford the rental rates. So, Old Tiberac's already taken steps to limit short-term rentals, but it, it could, it could, so in my opinion, we don't need to take that cap off, if anything, we should investigate, investigate the possibility of an ordinance to control short-term rentals that would otherwise be competing with our hospitality businesses that are here, Sabre Point in, and and the, the whole, the five motels that we already have. Why do we want to create competition for those businesses? With short-term rentals.
But you'd be changing somewhat the character of the town, since it's, I mean, when I was growing up here, Cornfield Point, Sabre Manor, Indian Town, Chalker Beach, was all short-term.
And then every family come in for a week.
A week or two weeks, and a week.
Vacation and.
And spend tons of money, and.
So they come back every year and.
Yeah.
Money and, and create the economy.
I totally agree with you, if you're allowing ADUs, that you limit how long, how short of a rental period it can be. But to come up with an ordinance to say that no one can rent for less than thirty days, thirty days, three months, whatever, I think that would hurt the town a great deal economically.
We already have that, it hasn't hurt the town. And we have had, Chris, Chris Costa can tell you, we have seventeen accessory dwelling units now that we didn't used to have, and now.
I know that, no, no, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying just if we were to come up with just a short-term ordinance, as opposed to related just specifically to ADUs, I think that would hurt the town. I think the way we have it now is right, the right way to go.
Well, it's just Simsbury has an ordinance, I'm, I'm just throwing that out, that other towns have elected to do it by ordinance instead of the way Old Tiberac did in zoning regs.
Right.
Well, that's why I chose my words carefully to turn my local zoning, because I live in a. Well, that's why I chose my words carefully to turn my local zoning because I live in a beach association. And we have a even more stringent, um, control over short-term rentals. So when you say local zoning, it's not, not even necessarily just the town or the, well, I, anyway.
Yeah.
I just, you know, not, not.
Right, I, I, yeah, here with Bob saying that, yeah.
I mean, again, we could rework that whole question. Alrighty, um, number twenty-one, I would add the option of multiple factors. Site which ones, plus I would add other, twenty-two. I would add. F Y. Uh, twenty-three, add, um, uh, uh, other.
When you say other.
Uh, category.
Like just a category of other.
And then it allows them to actually express themselves. And my corollary question was how, how much room do they have? Can they write a whole paragraph? Because I noticed in the old survey, some people did write. Paragraph, which is kinda nice. I mean, the extent that we wanna get.
It, it is kinda nice, but it also, if you're trying to get data, that's a hard way of getting it.
Well, if you have three people who write a paragraph, I mean, not. And anyway, okay, alright, so that, that was my thinking, um.
So I think that's why they limited the number other. Because it, it starts to create issues when you start looking at the data.
You don't know.
Right.
Doesn't mean it.
Right.
Alright, um. Twenty-five. Uh, I, I just put down need to clarify the question. It says, have you ever had difficulties finding affordable housing in your area? So I thought that might be.
Yeah, and again, what, what do you mean by affordable? Do you mean something, oh, I, I'm okay paying this or something that has an income requirement?
If you ever in your whole life. And they have a yes or no. I, I, I added C, not applicable and D other, but okay, number.
I think the question needs to be reworked.
Alright, well, twenty-seven. Twenty-nine, they have, should Old Saber do more to prevent development and keep the town the way it is? Yes or no? I guess I would have put elaborate, no one.
That was number twenty-nine?
Yes. Thirty, should Old Saber do more to remove barriers to housing development? Yes or no? And, uh, I, I.
I don't think, I think most people wouldn't understand what, what I mean.
I, 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 it's so open-ended that it's, it's, I, you know, do you. Uh, thirty-one, do you support more housing in your neighborhood? Yes or no? Anyway, that's, okay, those are such things.
Very good, thank you.
And you're, you're, I think it appears to be pretty similar to Doug's.
Yes.
Comments are very, very similar. The, uh, the quant, the comment I had sent in to Chris that we can all see here. It says, I, I was looking at the, uh, the survey. I was thinking of it more from the perspective of a developer, right? In that the questions seem to be really focused on, you know, do you live here already? Do you wanna move here? What do you want it to be like? Which is an important aspect of it, but as I thought about, um. The Rivercog present, presentation on transit-oriented development, I thought that was one of the more hopeful proposals we've seen. About what, what could be done, uh, around town within, you know, kind of the resources and the space and. And, you know, and all the limitations we're, we're all well aware of on, um, expanding housing in town. So, so I thought it might be helpful if, if a developer could kind of look at the questions and say. Well, this is the kind of information I need to know. You know, to, to help me vet the area if, if this is a viable project. So it's kind of a, a very general input. I don't have the answers to that question, but I have the. The curiosity as to how could we kind of raise the profile of the transit-oriented development, uh, ideas from Rivercog.
I think that's a good point, Dennis, here. I know, one of the ideas I think Chris had thrown around at one of the meetings is just kind of showing people like. Pictures of different types of affordable housing, kind of, do you like this or this or this or that? Because in some way, you know, some of the questions on here are very similar to the previous one, and we're gonna get answers that people want more affordable housing. We kind of know that, that's why we're all, we're meeting here. I think to your point, we wanna know what kinds of affordable housing, what do they look like that's gonna be palatable to both the residents? And then the next step is then how do we get developers to build that in the places that.
Right, right.
The residents, the developers think it should be built. It's kind of knowing, like, you know, if we said, do you want more in your neighborhood? Maybe people might say, no, but you show a picture of a duplex that looks like a single-family house, they might say, oh, that's fine, doesn't look different than my neighborhood.
Right, right, this ball.
I also wanted to suggest that another question be added, which is. Along the lines of should the architectural design scale and spatial setting. Be considered and its congruence with the, or fitting in with the neighborhood. You know, is that an important consideration in your?
So if we're gonna allow two-family houses in certain neighborhoods. We want the houses to all look similar, not exactly alike. But we don't want this big cube in a house, neighborhood of Colonials and Ranches is where you're going.
Well, yes, yes.
Without saying it, exactly like that.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah.
Or even, or even, you know, the, the comment is made that the, the new stuff is sometimes ugly. I mean, unfort- unfortunately, the. Project we had in front of us is pretty cookie cutter. Every development now being built looks exactly that way or. Does to me. It would be really nice to have something that is perhaps nineteenth century or. From the this century. I mean, I.
But I hear what you're saying. It is.
Yes.
It becomes an, an economy issue.
It's just a question as to how to make it palatable, you know, how, how people's feeling about it would change, you know.
Cause, cause I'll, I'll use an example. I'm looking for a garage and I figured, okay, I'm gonna go up to the barnyard up in Ellington. To see if they can build the garage the way I want it to look. And they can, because they use truss roof systems. And that's what they use, and it's because it's economy of scale. So they can do it if I want a timber frame, but I'm not gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars for a garage.
Correct, exactly.
So I, I hear what you're saying, when you're looking at.
Yeah, it's just a question to get at people's thinking and what factors are important in their consideration. Worded that way.
Totally.
I think that's really important. One of the meetings, Bob, you brought up like with the form-based zoning that some cities, I did some like recently. That's kind of the idea here is that it's more about what it looks like versus like what it's used for.
Right. You're, you're right, Michael. The form-based zoning would, um. Supposedly set up an envelope in which you could build a dwelling unit. And you could specify the details to the extent of the pitch roof not exceeding a height limit. Uh, not exceeding a coverage on the lot, abiding by setbacks and providing. Hmm, but let's say. Uh, that's, I say, look. We can still require a parking space like at the rate of one per dwelling. But there's a big movement going on at the state and across the country to eliminate parking requirements. Everywhere, and so that the developer would determine the need for the parking on the site. And I don't think that's the wise choice for Old Saberbrook and that to retain at least one parking space per dwelling. Is really, is pre- is presently quite necessary. If you have one and a, one and a quarter or one and a half parking spaces per dwelling. If you have three dwellings, then one, you'd have to have like five parking spaces. So you could have two people, two, two occupant groups, families, whatever, have two cars. But the other could only have one car and nobody could have any guests. And so that's what we're up against in a location like Old Saberbrook, where we don't have everybody moving around by bus and train. If you have no, if you have an apartment building and no parking, everybody's required to walk or take the bus or train or whatever. Lyft, Uber to go where they're going. We don't have that here. So we're not ready for no parking requirements, but be aware that there's a movement to get rid of parking requirements. So we can do what we can to the limits of what. We can sort of get away with at this juncture because things are going in a different direction at the state. And, and especially urban levels. With regard to forms, zone, form-based zoning, then there are still limits to what one can do. You, we have an architectural review board, which is advisory to the zoning commission. That tells the developer what would work in Old Tiber. We cannot use the word character any longer. The state required that we take it out of our rigs. It's, it's only in our regulations in two instances and it really doesn't have the same meaning. That people think character has of, with regard to a neighborhood. So in order to achieve a goal of things mel- meshing properly with the surroundings. Without using the word character, um, the ARB has input. But once they start to specify building materials, like use this kind of siding instead of the plastic stuff. Or to use this kind of, uh, what down, gutters and downspouts. Now you're talking about impacting the cost of the development. And that's really not working today because anything that ups the cost decreases the chance of getting it built. With eight dash thirty G, the, the developer could just say, no, they're not gonna do that because technically it's not in the zoning regs. It's a recommendation by the ARB. So we have this fine balance where we can influence but not mandate. And so we, we, it's, it's working okay right now, but you can't go too far with that. Because it'll get squashed and then it won't work at all.
Right. Very true.
You know, one thought I had response about the parking is, I mean, if I. Were looking at a apartment to rent or buy and someone told me there was no parking space. I mean, I'd walk away. I, you know, I mean, so actually, um, now it's true, people. Who could live without a car essentially, you know, without having a spot, you know, then those people will live there.
Well, I do a fair amount of rentals in New Haven and you'd be surprised.
Different, yeah.
Well, but that's what Bob's talking about. They're regulating stuff for urban, but spreading it out to the whole state. As opposed to leaving it where it belongs and, cause even if you rent in an apartment complex, you're paying four thousand dollars a month in rent. That doesn't include parking, parking's extra. Parking's two or three hundred dollars extra a month.
And not everybody gets it.
And not everyone gets it, cause they didn't build a parking spot for every apartment. They only built a percentage of the parking spots. You also have to pay every month for your dog, so your dog has to pay right, yeah. Serious. Yes, four thousand for a three-bedroom apartment. Two, five, two, eight for one bedroom. Very expensive out there. Any other questions regarding the survey? Any other comments?
Yeah, one, uh, yeah. One, one thing with, uh, with regard to what you said about Mariners Way not being, uh, subject to. A quote, maybe sub, not being subject to a question in the survey because the property changed hands. And it might not be available for that. I would say keep it in there as a question. To guide maybe a future development opportunity for the present owners. And it's, it's, it's just asking for opinions on what might work there. And since there's nothing happening there today, I would say, keep it, keep it alive. At the same time, when, uh, the Old Saberbrook Shopping Center was mentioned by, uh, let's see, that was, uh. With regard to Rivercog and their presentation, they put housing in the parking areas on the main street side of the shopping center. And they also put housing in the grassy area and in the parking lot on the Elm Street side. Uh, up towards, uh, Pasa Vida, if you will. Uh, I, I asked and, uh, Megan revealed that they didn't ask for Matt Rubin's input. And so if Mariners Way is, is subject to, uh, whether or not we should ask the question because the present owners are different. I think we should, uh, be careful about what kind of things we accept in visual presentations without input from the owner. And so Matt Ruben, as far as I know, Matt Rubin didn't okay putting housing in the parking on the, uh, Route one side.
No, that was, I mean. That's part of Thrive and that was just an illustration of what could be done.
Right, but.
But I, I understand what you're saying. Someone should have re- reached out to Matt Rubin and say, what do you think of this?
That would be nice to, to have that. And it, it, it also, it appears that the grassy area on the Stop and Shop curb cut to Elm Street. That's back there where there was once a temporary skate park, if you will, that there, they're in, a detail in the lease. For Stop and Shop says that there won't be a building there. And so zoning's not stopping that and.
No.
Po- policies are not stopping housing from going there. Even Matt Rubin himself is, if he wanted to, he'd have to get the lease to change for Stop and Shop. It's, that's Dalhaze and Stop and Shop that are keeping housing from going there.
Yeah, no, I totally agree with that, cause Stop and Shop is ruthless. They'll build a new shopping center a mile down the street and won't let the other, won't release the rent on the old one.
Yeah, I don't think we should necessarily let, you know, a building or land out of the, impact how we wanna do long-term planning and visioning and conceptual ideas, though. It's kind of, that's kind of, I think one of the things our commission can do is look at what is the future, like what do we want things to look like, what could be possible versus. Obviously, what's actually gonna, gonna happen in the short term is highly dependent on who owns it and what they're willing to do and the developers. But in terms of, this is what we'd like to see in town and the general areas and things we'd like to look like, I don't think that's out of line.
I, I don't think it's out of line, but I think you have to preface it by letting people know that. This is just a concept and there may be things that restrict this concept from happening. And it's not based on feedback from the current owner. Because, you know, we present this plan and I think a lot of us in this room liked that plan. But it's not feasible if Stop and Shop basically has a hold on that piece of land right there. And so we gotta be careful how we present things to make sure that the public understands. That we're not holding it back. You know, Matt Rubin's not necessarily holding it back. It's, he's got a business to run.
It's still private.
He's got, yeah, exactly. So, but I think you're right, Mike. I think we gotta be able to demonstrate what the future could look like.
Yeah.
There has to be a mix of both.
Absolutely, and maybe showing people what's possible by, let them, you know, go talk to the owners and be like, hey, I'd really like to see this in your parking lot. Maybe that might change their mind, who knows? But the customers right across the street sounds really good for a guy who has a shopping center, but.
It's our delivery service.
Yes, Bob.
So to, to maybe avoid or address this issue, I would recommend, uh, a, a, a new question for the survey. Regarding new housing should be located. And then you give the choices of close to Main Street, close to groceries, close to grocery stores. Close to Route one, close to the train station, or scattered all around the residential areas of town. And pick as many, pick as many as you want, but see, it's not so specific that you have to get input from a particular property owner.
Right, I like that. That's a good question.
I don't think you can pick as many as you want. I think we had a question like that and it just got, it was all the same all across the board. People just checked them all. I'd be gonna say, which one is the most, the highest priority? Will be your most important?
Right, okay, that, that would work, yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
If I may, there, there, there's a question in there that said uh, something about uh, housing. Let me, well, let me see. I'll come back when I find it. Here it is, number eighteen. It's similar, but it's not what I was recommending. It's a, which of the following areas should mixed-use buildings be allowed? Main Street, all business areas around town. Uh, and then south of ninety-five or along Boston Post Road, Route One. I would first recommend that that say that uh, all areas south of I ninety-five. That would be re- including residential as well as businesses. And it would be clear. And then the other thing would be that along Boston Po- Po- Boston Post Road, Route One. Remember that Route One all is mostly south of ninety-five, but Mariner's Way is north of ninety-five. So you have to draw the distinction there. And if you're just gonna, yeah, I don't think it makes sense to talk about along Boston Post Road without specifying south of ninety-one as distinctly different from Mariner's Way Route One.
And we almost have like a map, like on the economic development section, we have those like regions we talked about. We like put a map in there and like label like Spencer Plains or like, you know, Mariner's Way or Main Street.
But I, I, I have, I, well, I have more uh, comments and questions. The, let's see. Number nine. The response D was uh, res- residence willingness for affordable housing. I don't think willingness is the right word. I think it would be uh, let's see, what do they have? I wrote in pencil, it's hard to read. I think it would be, what, what, I think what the question is trying to get at is to, is to judge the, the level of opposition to affordable housing. I don't know if you wanna be so abruptly, uh, so, so negative in the, in the question, but it's not a, yes.
Um, how about resistance? Residents' resistance to, for, for affordable housing. Anyway, I just, she, she said residence resistance to affordable housing. Instead of willingness. Residents' resistance.
But why, why is there a lack of affordable housing? And I don't think a resident's willingness for affordable housing addresses the question in the way that gives guidance to what to do. That's my, that's my point. Uh, let's see. Uh, next page. That's the top of the page, question number eleven. What role should the town play? And since we already have regulations regarding ADUs, I would recommend just putting on item A there, put the word further right there at the beginning. So it'd be further relaxing regulations. Cause we've already relaxed them. Maybe people don't know, but this would also convey that regulations have been relaxed, should they be relaxed further. Let's see. Oh, under number twelve, can you identify any housing trends in town? Well, this is an opinion question because it seems to me that if people were to answer that they see a trend of decreasing home values, I'd like to see what, I'd like to see the data that home values plural are decreasing. And if it's an opinion, that's fine. You can have an opinion, but if you don't have any data, I don't know how you could say that. Uh, number thirteen, which of the following housing development options would you like to see in Old Saybrook? Large apartment complex in one area of town. Why, could that be in one or more areas of town? We already have one. And so I'm trying to avoid the confusion where someone might say have a large complex in one area of town. Oh, we already have that. So if you put or more in there, then it opens up the possibility for, should we do that again? Or do it even bigger? So. Uh, convert established building residences into housing units. Well, I, I would recommend putting in, into added housing units on, on choice number C for thirteen. So it would be convert established buildings and residences into add, into added housing units. Like dup- or, and then if you wish, you could specify duplex or triplex or something like that because to convert established buildings and residences into housing units could mean a tear down and a rebuild. That converts a house into a residence. You could tear down a, a, a business in a B-three district and turn it into a residence. But that, that, I don't think that's what the question is looking for. It would be adding new dwelling units. Or housing units. Uh, number fourteen. B response is multifamily and C response is apartment in a complex. What's the difference? A multifamily, by, by multifamily, we mean like a triplex where you could own one and rent out two? Or does multifamily mean, you know, it's like, so?
If that, you know, definitions are needed here, Bob, I think for some of these terms that.
Yes.
But it makes sense to us, but.
Yeah, I know. In real estate, if it's a four-family, it's considered basically under the same guidelines as a multifamily. If it's a five-family or above, it's commercial at that point.
Okay.
So I think, I think this has to be defined.
What's that? The?
It just needs to be defined what we mean by multifamily.
Um, multifamily to me is um, more than three dwelling units in a, in a dwelling building.
Yeah.
But uh, you, you had it at five?
Well, five is just five means it's a commercial building at that point.
Oh, oh, I see, assessment, okay. Alright, so I don't, I don't know which, I don't know what to do about that one, yeah.
Yeah.
With regard to using photographs, it's like number sixteen is back to the Mariner's Way. But with, even if you don't specify that a location such as Mariner's Way, it's like which of the following options would be, would be best in Old Saybrook? And just have pairs of pictures, A versus B, A or B, B, A or C, B or C, that gets you three different types. I have some twenty-one photos of housing types that currently exist in Old Saybrook. And there's quite a spread of the appearance of those. And if people were given a choice of what they would like to see in Old Saybrook, using photos of what's already in Old Saybrook, I think that would be useful. Don't go looking for pictures of multifamilies in other cities, other states, because that's less real to me. I have a photo of um, the vessel eight dash thirty G buildings, especially the one in New London. And that could, that could arrive by an eight dash thirty G and it's got a good probability of becoming a reality if Vessel wants to build that where they, where they choose. They have had some fights in Glastonbury and in Simsbury, but um, uh, Vessel is the kind of thing that, that they could, they build the kind of thing that is not what Old Saybrook has. Even Saybrook Station is not like that. And I would recommend not suggesting the vessel building appearance, but have people emphasize that they're, what is acceptable is the kind of things we already have. Ferry Crossing, Saybrook Station, Saybrook Village. It, most people don't know what that looks like. But take a look at that. And then um, we also have senior housing on Sheffield Street. Uh, and Colter Street, the condos down at the end of Colter Street. Do people want more like that? That's like, pick things that we already have. I find this is a problem even at the state level. It's like nobody's giving any visuals of what it is they're talking about. There's no pictures of, this is the kind of housing we're talking about. Or maybe they'll give an architect's rendering of a pretty little picture with a fake tree and um, a triplex or, and they're often made out of brick. We have that on Lynn Street. Why not just show a picture of something we already have? Alright, so then uh, I got that. Alright, then. Alright, I, those, those are the biggies for me. I go ahead, I always, there's always more, but, but. Where should uh, housing be located? Uh, new housing, where should new housing be located? That assumes that people understand that new housing can mean increased housing density. But it's not really great to talk about housing density because you could add more housing without changing the appearance of density. So if you turn a single family into a two-family and you put one new door on the front, it doesn't really change the look of the building. But it increases housing. If you increase the density, yes, but it doesn't look like it did. That's a significant thing that's going on with regard to the uh, Strong Towns movement. If you, if you have heard of Strong Towns, good for you. If you haven't, you should look up Strong Towns online. It's a, it's movement especially stressing what's called uh, missing middle housing. And I, I would recommend that for Old Saybrook, missing middle is, is better than going to multifamily apartment complexes of three stories or more where every unit has a doorway to a hall. I think we already have, we already have that. And missing middle provides for housing where your, the door from your living quarters opens to the great outdoors. And I think that's a distinction that people can understand.
Good point. Thank you, Bob.
I just wanna bring something up. Um, we are participants, I think the one that raised their hand before that we weren't able to speak with.
Yeah.
That are having trouble speaking. Um, I just received a message from Chris about it. I don't know how you wanna respond to that. They somehow wanted to unmute but couldn't unmute. There's no one on attendance.
There's no one regarding the condos? The, so it was the other time there was two people on there.
Yes, and I know that they let out after that, this was just, they are fresh, uh, I'm currently on the Housing Task Force meeting and unable to mute. They gave me an opportunity to speak. No one is letting me unmute there. This is frustrating. For, I, I know technically we don't know, but I don't know how they're supposed to be able to handle entering their opinion there.
I.
I just wanted to bring it up.
They can sign back on, we can try to.
Well, the problem is we've already made the decision without their input.
They were talking about that um, Housing Task Force specifically, isn't this uh, maybe the workshops? I'm not sure if they were trying to. I, I'm not sure. I just wanted to bring it up.
Anything else on the survey? Would that move on to committee representation and staff reports, anything? Rob, you have something else to say?
No, good night. Thank, thank you. Bye.
Alright. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Very good. Thank you, folks.